This session is about innovation, technology and industry. We welcome Professor Sun Dong, Secretary for Innovation, Technology and Industry for coming. Members who would like to put questions, please press the button. I will first ask the secretary to give an opening remarks. Thank you, Chairman, members. Technological and industrial innovations are the fundamental pathways for developing new quality productive forces. This year's budget continues to place focus on accelerating Hong Kong's high-quality development through the promotion of Hong Kong's innovation and technology, I N T development. The budget also announced devoting more resources to lead Hong Kong steadily towards our vision of becoming an international I N T center. I will give an overview of the relevant key measures in the budget along three areas. First, to enhance the I N T ecosystem and promote the new industrialization in Hong Kong and to enlarge the I N T talent pool to create strong impetus for growth. Artificial intelligence, A I is at the core of accelerating the development of new quality productive forces, and we endeavor to develop A I as a core industry. The budget has set aside one billion dollars for the establishment of the Hong Kong Artificial Intelligence Research and Development Institute, which will spearhead and support Hong Kong's innovative research and development, R and D and industrial applications of A I. Furthermore, the Cyberport's Artificial Intelligence Supercomputing Center, A I S C, has commenced operation with the support of the government's artificial intelligence subsidy scheme. Several R and D projects related to large language models, large models and new materials and synthetic biology that utilize A I S C's computing power have already started. On promoting the development of I N Ts industries, we launched the new industrialization acceleration scheme and enhanced the new industrialization funding scheme last year. Also, the innovation and technology industry-oriented fund is under preparation, and we plan to seek funding approval from the legislature in the middle of this year. Furthermore, we will launch the pilot manufacturing production line upgrade support scheme this year to provide funding up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars each on one government-to-company matching basis to enterprises operating production lines in Hong Kong to support their information of smart production strategies, introduction of advanced technologies into existing production lines. We're also preparing for the launch of the pilot I N T accelerator scheme to further strengthen the support to startups. To promote R and D, we are taking forward the establishment of the third Eno Hong Kong Research Cluster. We will focus on advanced manufacturing, materials, energy and sustainable development and have established the Hong Kong Space Robotics and Energy Center under the Eno Hong Kong Research Clusters with the aim of developing a robot which will contribute to the Chang'e eight mission. The Hong Kong Microelectronics Research and Development Institute is preparing the setup of two pilot lines at the microelectronics centers in Yunnan this year, striving to put them into operation next year to support the product development and trial production. Furthermore, we have invited institutions to submit proposals for the subsidy program for the setup of life and health technology research institutes. And we'll also seek funding approval from the Finance Committee of the Legislative Council in the middle of this year for the implementation of the Frontier Technology Research Support Scheme. As for I N T land, the government is taking forward the development of the Hong Kong part of the Heta Shenzhen Hong Kong Science and Technology Innovation Corporation, Song the Hong Kong Park at full steam. The Hong Kong Park is developed in two phases from west to east. With the first three buildings approaching completion, the park will officially enter into its operational space later this year. The construction of the other five buildings is in full swing and is expected to be completed progressively from two thousand and twenty seven onwards. As for the remaining sites of phase one, we will identify suitable land parcels for invitation of private development proposal this year with a view to taking forward the development of the park with enhanced speed and quantity through collaboration with the government and the market. In addition, three point seven billion dollars has been earmarked in the budget to expedite the completion of infrastructure and public facilities of phase one of the park. At the same time, the government of the Hong Kong S A R will continue to work with the mainland authorities to explore implementation of innovative policy measures with a view to promoting the convenient cross-boundary flow of innovative elements. The incentive techno pole of the northern metropolis will serve as strategic key for the I N T development, or rather, industry planning and the base for developing, developing new quality productive forces for Hong Kong in future. The Hong Kong Science and Technology Parks Corporation is conducting a master planning study for the first batch of twenty hectare land. The study is expected to complete in the third quarter of this year. The government commenced the reselling procedures for ten hectare site at Sandy Ridge for the use as data center and related facilities and end two thousand and twenty four and is actively making preparations for land disposal to fulfill the needs of the industry for digital infrastructure. Two, to promote digital economy development and development Hong Kong into a smart city. The government is committed to providing more efficient public services to citizens through leveraging technology. The I M Smart has over three point three million registered users and over one thousand one hundred online users and e-forms provided by the government and public and private organizations. We are driving the comprehensive upgrade of I M Smart to realize single portal for online government services by the end of this year. Meanwhile, the digital corporation, rather, the digital corporate I D platform will be rolled out progressively from end two thousand and twenty six with a view to facilitating digital transformation of corporations and enhancing government departments' efficiency in processing corporate online applications. In addition, the Digital Policy Office will continue to coordinate all bureaus and departments to use the Hong Kong pilot developed by the Hong Kong generative A I Research and Development Center on a trial basis and will gradually increase the number of participants of the pilot program. This will help reduce the manpower required of government personnel to handle general document processing tasks, allowing manpower to be deployed in other areas of need. Three, to reactively integrate into the overall development of the country and consolidate our role as a bridge connecting mainland and the world. Hong Kong will continue to deepen I N T cooperation with the mainland for better integrating into the overall national development. Regarding cross-boundary data flow, the standard contract for the cross-boundary flow of personal information within the Groundon Hong Kong, the Cal greater Bay area, mainland Hong Kong facilitation measures has been extended to all industries promoting the safe and orderly cross-boundary flow of personal information within the Greater Bay Area. In addition, Cyberport has been actively collaborating with the Shanghai Management Authority to facilitate the landing of startup enterprises, respective parts and the World Intellectual Property Organization Global Innovation Index. Twenty twenty five science and technology cluster will be held in Hong Kong later this year. With the country's staunch support, Hong Kong has been making steady progress towards our vision of developing Hong Kong into an international I N T center. The government will continue to deploy resources in joint hand with stakeholders to promote the development of vibrant I N T ecosystem. I would like to express my gratitude to all members again for the support to the I N T development along appeals for the continued support of members and the public for the work of the I T I B. Thank you, Chairman. There are twenty eight members who have pressed the button. I will read out the names. I read out the names of the first eighteen members. Please pay attention to the order. First, Mister Robert Lee, Mister Tan Kapiu, Miss Chan Yip Ming, Mister Andrew Lam, Doctor Wendy Hong, Mister Yim Kong, Miss Elizabeth Quat, Mister Chan Shiu Hong, Mister Edmund Wong, Miss Yong Hua Yan, Doctor, Mister Jimmy Ng, Mister Yu Pak Leng, Doctor Loai Kwok, Miss Dorin Kong, Mister Ng Man Yu, Mister Lau Kwak Fong, Mister Sunny Tang, and then Mister Stanley Ng, nineteenth, Mister Kenneth Lau, Mister Lam Chan Sing, Mister Tang Fei, Mister Chang Kim Po, Doctor So Chuen Wing, Mister Chang Hak Fong, Miss Carmen Khan, Mister William Wong, and Mister Martin Liu. I will ask members to observe the time limit so that more members can speak. First, Mister Robert Lee. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on I T I B zero three one. That's my question. That's about the card I D platform. The first phase been launched. The platform covered various services, including text filing, digital signing, and so on and so forth. The D P O has met with the trade to see how we can further enhance the card I D platform. In the reply, the administration said that as at the end of two thousand and twenty six, the platform is going to be rolled out progressively and a sandbox will be launched afterwards. But I don't see in the reply how the corp I D will help enterprises say, open bank account by allowing the bank to check their information on the corp I D platform so that they don't have to, say, retrieve information from the company registry. We should also include functions of, say, tax filing. We have, say, a precious metal and stones registration regime. Customs and Excise Department is involved. The application of license under the regime very often are paper-based. I know that the administration is already working with the Hong Kong M A. But I hope that it will also work with other regulators such as S F C and the Immigration Department, C N S D. I hope that all departments and public bodies will make use of corp I D platform so that we can make all forms of payment on the platform. Thank you, Secretary. Corp I D and digital signing. I'd like to ask Mister Wong, Commissioner for Digital Policy, to answer the question. Thank you. In the reply, we mentioned that we are preparing for the corp I D platform. Hopefully, by the end of two thousand and twenty six, we can roll out the platform progressively. We work closely with the government departments and the trade to develop more functions that are suitable to the trade. Hopefully, by the end of this year, we are going to launch a sandbox so that interested enterprises and departments can carry out some testing on the platform. There are four major functions to the platform. See, on identity verification, digital signing. They will facilitate agreement arrangements, say, between the enterprises and the government. We also have authentication of information so that enterprises can make e-filing. We have a documentation data access function. Apart from submitting forms online, the enterprises can also upload their licenses onto the platform. The Hong Kong M A's received support from the trade, especially the banks on the platform. We believe that quite a number of enterprises and government departments will have their systems linked to the corp I D platform when it's rolled out in two thousand and twenty six. Within eighteen months of the launch of the corp I D platform, the government departments will have to link their systems to it. Next, Mister Tan Kapiu. Thank you. Innovation and technology are areas of concern of the F T U's. Mister Dennis Lam put fourteen questions on this topic. But he didn't press the button fast enough, so I will ask the questions on his behalf. I have three questions. First, our R and D contribution to G D P is some one percent. If you look at the mainland, the relevant percentage is two point six eight percent. For some cities, it's four to eight percent. So I wonder if we have a goal on the percentage of R and D's contribution to G D P. My second question. The country adopt this enterprise-led approach in developing I N T. We invited scholars from the Tsinghua University to come to conduct a study for us. We see that more than half of the capital invested in R and D come from the government. So I wonder if the administration have any measures to encourage the private sector to invest in R and D. My third question. The U S government launched a trade war, an unreasonable trade war against the world. Under the one country, two systems principle, we are a free trade. Given the uncertainties, I wonder, how will this landscape affect us? What challenges and opportunities do we have? Thank you.
All right, three questions. The G D P ratio in relation to R and D and the government's role as well as trade war. Three questions. First, about the share of manufacturing industry to G D P, according to the twenty twenty three statistics is one percent. But in terms of manufacturing alone, we, the figure has grown by close to thirty billion dollars. That's a six percent increase and is the second high sector in the past two decades. That means despite the relatively gloomy outlook in twenty twenty three, the manufacturing sector in this, in Hong Kong has continued to grow. Now, it's been twenty years or so, and Hong Kong is experiencing transformation. We need to bear in mind that we are in a new era, and there is a new development pattern for the manufacturing industry around the world. And this new pattern also is happening in Hong Kong. In fact, the United Nations is discussing with different international organizations to update some classification systems, and manufacturing sector is one of them. It covers a lot of processes such as product design, technological development, data-related services, testing, certification, et cetera. These are not covered in the census and statistic efforts in Hong Kong. In the past few months, the I T I B and the C N S D have been putting the heads together, and we also work with the sector so as to come up with a new indicator for the manufacturing and new industrialization segments. According to the twenty twenty three statistics, the G D P growth amounted to some seven or some six billion dollars, that's two point six percent of the G D P. We believe that the indicator can more fully reflect the progress of new industrialization in Hong Kong. The second, the answer to the second question is this. According to the blueprint for I N T development, the ultimate goal is to increase the private sector input to a ratio of four to six. And that depends on the development of industries in Hong Kong. We are, well, of course, we need to have industrial development in order to attract investments, and we look forward to further improvement about the U S tariff war. As far as the technology sector in Hong Kong is concerned, I need to emphasize that we need to dovetail with the national development, and that means we need to support technological development. It's the number one strategy of our country. It's also our priority. The second point is that apart from talking about it, we need to consider our advantages, and we also need to take steady yet bold steps so as to foster greater exchanges on the front of culture as well as technology. Now, never mind what is happening. In the past three years, we have been taking steady steps towards the goals set out in the development blueprint as well as the P A policy address and the budgets. Miss Chan Yip Ming.
Two questions, I T I B oh five and one six oh in relation to the Sandy Ridge in northern metropolis and smart lampposts. First, about Sandy Ridge, over a dozen expression of interest have been received, and according to the budget, active preparations are in place to engage the private sector. Now, my question is, will the government tell us more about the market response at the moment, and when will the tendering begin? Second question, there are three pilot areas in the northern metropolis, but none of them covers industrial development or the I N T sector. Apart from the Heta Corporation Zone, will secretary consider rolling out more pilot areas in collaboration with the Development Bureau? Second question about smart lampposts in the new territories. Every year, we have a lot of burglaries happening in village houses in the rural areas in the new territories. Especially for villages closer to the boundary. They are quite remote. In light of the escalating figures, I think we need to install more smart lampposts for the sake of our people and their properties. So I hope the bureau will support the security bureau and the police's work in installing installing smart lampposts in the northern metropolis so as to combat crime and to tackle other matters such as fly-tipping illegal occupation. Right, three questions. For the first question, I'd like to ask Undersecretary Miss Zhang to take that question. Thank you, Miss Chan. Thank you, Chairman. I thank members for the support in the Sandy Ridge project. The market has given very positive response to the Sandy Ridge initiative, and we are in close liaison with the market. So as mentioned by the member, last year, we invited E O Is from the market. And meanwhile, we are working with the market, and we invite him to provide further information because in order to set up a data center there, we want to look at the needs of the market, and we will also continue to work with the market. But the second question is about the pilot area development. The consultancy report in relation to northern metropolis and Sanjin techno pole will be completed soon, and by then, we will report to the Legislative Council. According to information, two hundred and ten hectares in Sanjin techno pole will be set aside for I N T development. And together with eighty seven hectares in Heta, altogether, we have three hundred hectares for I N T development. That's called the greater loop area development. Relating to industrial developments as well as I N T developments in Hong Kong, it will be a very important strategy for, strategy for Hong Kong as well as our country. We're discussing this new model. We've taken into account the success in other countries and in the mainland. In due course, we will provide more information to members. The third question relates to smart lampposts. This relates to the portfolio of the Security Bureau. Perhaps I'll give the floor to Mister Tony Wong. Right, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Miss Chan, for the questions. In the development blueprint for I N T development in Hong Kong, we have proposed that smart lampposts will be installed in new development areas as part of the infrastructure, and suitable devices will also be installed for use by different government departments. Now, in Kai Tech Development Area, Tong Shou New Town Extension, Kootum North and Fanning North N D A, as well as the E section of Fanning Bypass, the Lock Ma Chao Loop area, Hong Shui Kew, Ha Chun, and Yunnan South N D As, smart lampposts will be installed. This is how we support various departments. For example, the Hong Kong Police Force has given us their demands in installing devices. And on top of that, we also consider the needs of different government departments depending on the local circumstances and the progress of works. If need be, we will work with the relevant government departments and replace lampposts with smart lampposts. Thank you, Chair. Next, Mister Andrew Lam. Thank you, Chair. Two questions, one eight two and one eight three, both from me. One eight two relates to e-government audit. One eight three relates to digital education. According to the reply, the e-government audit was completed last year on the basis of the six hundred million dollars set aside for the initiative in two thousand and twenty two. And according to the reply, a hundred digital government initiatives will be rolled out, and big data analytics, A I, et cetera, will be deployed. Now, looking at this table provided, about twenty departments will make use of the services. About the big data analytics platform, how many of them come from government departments? Because when we talk about a central database, it's departmental central database, not a central database for the whole of the government. So about the twenty digital government initiatives on the platform, I want to know how many of them are truly connected. The second question relates to one eight three, and that's about a consultancy study that is to take place in two thousand and twenty five, twenty six to promote digital trade. And according to the reply, the consultant will have regard to, say, the role of Hong Kong, the prerequisites as well as rules and standards. So my question is whether we're able to mine more data to support such transactions on the big data analytics platform? And is it part of the consultant's job to look at restrictions and breakthroughs? Right, two questions on e-government audit and on data trading. First question, I'll give the floor to Mister Tony Wong. Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mister Lam for his questions. I'm not going to repeat what Mister Lam already said. He summarized the questions and replies. Now, in short, when it comes to the big data analytics platform, in two thousand and twenty two, we set up this platform on government cloud in two thousand and twenty two so as to allow sharing of departmental data and analysis of the data. But of course, different government departments may also analyze the data kept within the department for better services to be provided. So we cater for both needs. The concept that we embrace is that we need to go by the real-time data for better accuracy. So the department's database is one that comes with greater accuracy. But we also have the big data analytics platform, which is helpful. Next question about data trading or sharing. Well, the matter has been discussed by the sectors, the legislators, as well as the government. A detailed review will have to be conducted. It is conducive to open data. But at the same time, we need to consider the current circumstances in Hong Kong. In terms of developing a digital economy in Hong Kong, we need to take things step by step. Against the current backdrop of geopolitical tensions, we need to reconsider whether to give priority to data transaction. The second point is that we need to reassure our country for data to flow across the boundary from the mainland to Hong Kong in a safe and orderly manner. We also need to tell the whole world that Hong Kong is a safe and open place when it comes to data. We welcome data from around the world. Hong Kong is a data hub. However, we don't have a lot of data ourselves. We're just a city. It's different from our country. So we need to reassure our country first in order to facilitate the flow of data. These are, I mean, security is a question that we need to ponder. Once these thorny issues are tackled, I would say that the data trading is conducive to Hong Kong.
Doctor Wendy Hong. I agree with you, what you said. We just have to mind our own business despite the volatility on the market or in the external environment. Northern Metropolis will be our industrial hub. The first batch of the eight buildings will be completed, say, within this year, but the second batch will only be completed in twenty to thirty. We don't know when the other parts of the northern metropolis will be completed. Technology advances in leaps and bounds. Now, we are trying to attract enterprises to come. When the northern metropolis is yet to be completed, how can we help the enterprises who have how can we help the enterprises who have, or which have already come here, do a business here? We have quite a number of vacant commercial buildings and premises, and the market is going down. Will the government, say, procure or rent industrial and commercial buildings, renovate them, release them out to I N T enterprises to meet their demand? The locations and facilities of these industrials and commercial buildings are very comprehensive and good. So I think that the government should make use of these premises to achieve, say, a cluster effect. I think that this is an interim measure before the Northern Metropolis is completed. Will the administration consider this? Second, there are five public R and D centers under the government. They focus on application-based research. But people have adverse views against these centers. I wonder if we will divide the duties between the public R and D centers and the R and D centers within the universities. So that, say, for example, the R and D centers of the government should be focused on the middle and downstream development. So instead of working on the same things, the public R and D should work with the universities. Also, the five R and D centers have their own teams to work on different things. I wonder if the administration will create a platform to incorporate these five R and D's centers, the university R and D centers, so that we can have, say, a consolidated team to work on it? Thank you. It's almost three questions. You have put three questions. Well, it's almost three minutes, and you've put three questions. So, well, the first question is on the use of vacant industrial and commercial buildings. Second, about R and D centers. Perhaps the secretary choose to answer some of them and then give a written reply late afterwards? Thank you. Yes, the loop. The three buildings is approaching its completion. This term of the government has taken office for less than three years. The remaining five buildings will be completed by twenty-twenty-seven. It's already very fast. You can see how long it's taken for us to complete the Lushko Building retrovision. You talked about vacant buildings. They are great options earlier on. When the mainland enterprises come to set up their presence in Hong Kong, we brought them to the vacant commercial buildings. But those commercial buildings are private. Let's go build members can help us because we have industry practitioners here. I think that the government should work with the sector and the trade. I agree that this is a great direction for us to take. Our I N T roadmap is very clear. We have Productivity Council, A S G, and the three A I centers, the Gen A I Supercomputing Center and the New Life and Health Science Center. All of them have different missions. Some of them work with universities. Say, for example, the Microelectronics Research Center is the bridge between the trade and the university. We, they are building a pilot production line. Some centers, say, for example, the A I Supercomputing Center, they also work on R and D. Because we should not just rely on university team. We need supercomputing power. So the A I S C is not just a bridge. They have to work with the universities on scientific research because the center can offer support in terms of computing power and data. Thank you. Next, Mr. Yim Kong. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, I have two questions. First, zero seven zero. The Innovation and Technology Industry Oriented Fund. The administration said that they will participate as a limited partner of the sub-funds and make contributions to each sub-fund of the I T I F with the total amount of contribution not exceeding ten billion dollars. I wonder how the administration can make sure that the I T I B can be operating on a sustainable basis, given the ten billion dollars contribution? If eventually, the overall fund size of the sub-funds under the I N T cannot reach forty billion dollars, will the administration inject further funds into the I T I F? Is there a mechanism for the government to exit the participation? Second, one-three-nine. On enhancing their new industrialization funding scheme, the administration said that the passing rate of approval is some ninety percent, and many of the production lines belong to a traditional manufacturing sector. So almost all applications are approved under the funding scheme. In order to make sure that the government money is made use to fund I N T, I wonder if the administration will adjust or improve the approving criteria to make better use of government resources so that we can focus more on advanced technology? For the approved production lines, some of them are about replacement of old facilities and production lines. The government has already subsidized the old production lines with, say, ten million dollars, and the enterprises are going to put their old productions line up for auction. They can, say, earn one to two million dollars in return. I wonder if the government will claw back these one to two million dollars? Or are they going to leave them with the factories? Thank you. Two questions. I will ask Mr. Ivan Lee, Commissioner for Innovation and Technology, to take some of the questions. Before that, let me give you my views. First, I'm confident in the civil servants. I've always asked them to be more flexible. I will ask Mr. Lee to further elaborate. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Yim. This question on the new industrialization funding scheme. The approval rate is very high. That's because the applicants, before they filed their applications, have talked to the secretariat so that they know what kind of documents to prepare and submit. Many applicants engage consultants, say, for example, the Productivity Council, in assisting them to file the application. We do have a committee to scrutinize all the applications. In terms of mode of subsidy, we reimburse the enterprises. We ask the enterprise to set up the production line, make investment, submit the audit report and project report to us before we reimburse them on a one-to-two government-enterprise matching basis. In the report, the enterprise need to let us know the value added to their business because of the new production line so that we can assess the effectiveness of the entire project. Thank you. Mr. Yim. If the factory put their old production line up for auction and they earn some money in return, will the government ask them to return the money? After getting the administration's funding, the factory have to register a charge. In other words, the factory cannot sell the assets purchased under the scheme within a certain number of years. Ms. Elizabeth Quat, the relationship between the U S and China is getting worse. This pose opportunities and challenges to Hong Kong. There are some Chinese I N T talents in the U S may choose to come to Hong Kong as a result. It is now easier for the universities to trial for these talents. We also know that the U S is trying to ask the China Concept Stocks to exit the market. So some high-quality U S stocks may come to list in Hong Kong. So I think that we should trial for I N T talents from the U S, and we should also create a green channel to encourage China Concept Stocks listed on the U S Stock Exchange to come to Hong Kong to boost the I N T development here. Also, Hong Kong is faced with a fiscal deficit. I think that we should reduce manpower and resources. Some departments find it difficult to cut manpower. That's why they choose to cancel some of their I T projects. We are now trying to develop a smart government. We want departments to make use of I T better. But if they are, say, canceling their C O P projects, then that will affect the development of smart government. So I wonder what the government's take is on this? On I A I application, we want to encourage the government to make better use of A I. They said that they are establishing our own platform. Now we have Deep Seek. On the mainland, some of the professional governments are making use of Deep Seek in their day-to-day operation already. So I wonder if we have any measures to encourage government departments and bureaus to make use of Deep Seek? Thank you. Three questions. First, trade war. Second, canceling I N T projects and, wow, thank you, Ms. Quat, for the three very important questions. First, I know that we are all concerned about the trade war. A country already has a plan for it. The S A R government also have made preparations. You can look at the policies, the I N T Development Blueprint that we've rolled out, as well as our I N T park. We have already taken into account the uncertainties that we may face. You talked about whether talents and high-quality enterprises will come back to Hong Kong because of the political uncertainties. We have a tech committee on education and information technology. Very soon, we are going to come to the Lushko to apply for a three-billion-dollar frontier technology fund. Some companies listed on Nasdaq are reaching out to us. We must leverage on our unique strengths. What's different from the past is that our country is becoming stronger. We must integrate into the national strategy. This afternoon, I'm going to participate into, in a event organized by the Productivity Council. Hong Kong is going to work with a I N T park in Shanghai and Shenzhen. We can be a springboard. Well, this is a big topic. I can elaborate on it on some other occasions. You also asked about I A I. We are going to work on it, and the direction of development will not change. The contributions of R and D to G D P is now some one percent. We hope to further increase it in the future. We are concerned if the percentage is going down instead of going up. We must maintain the current level while hoping for an increase, of course. As you can see, the government has been rolling out new measures and policies. While we have to cut expenditure on I N T expenditure, we have to look into some of our I N T projects. For the project that you just quoted, they may be under the purview of other bureaus. As for application of A I, that's something that the S A R government is very much concerned about as well. According to the statistics that I gathered last year, we have already over ten thousand users within the government for our platform. We continue to promote it in the Lushko as well. I talked about the Hong Kong Pilot. That's the computer desktop version. We are now developing a mobile application version of it. We have to look into the computing power, the team. A R and D center cannot take up all the work, but we are going to put this into market.
About digital government, smart government, I just want to say that the government is looking into different options. I believe that in this year's policy address, the Chief Executive will provide more details. Right, a very detailed answer. Next, Mr. Chen Se Hong. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on two questions, I T I B oh-seven-eight and one-five-five. I put these questions about the development of the Hong Kong A I R and D Institute with a one-billion-dollar investment, according to the reply. This will be a very important initiative in enhancing the Hong Kong A and I, Hong Kong A I ecosystem. At the moment, we have a number of initiatives, such as the Air Inno-Hong Kong, as well as Cyberport's A I S C, A I Supercomputing Center, as well as the three-billion-dollar A I subsidy scheme. All these initiatives will go hand in hand. But I don't think my question has been answered. My question is whether the A I R and D Institute has overlapping functions with other relevant bodies? For example, at A I, at Air Inno-Hong Kong, we have the Hong Kong Guide R and D Center. We also have an A I Robotics Innovation Center under the National Science Academy of Science, as well as another A I lab relating to fintech, another A I center relating to the development of robots. Even the Cyberport and the Science Park are focusing on A I as well. The Hong Kong M A has an A I lab for local universities such as City Universities, Poly Universities, Education University. They all have the relevant A I research projects and labs. The I N T Fund of the government covers different schemes, such as the Public Sector Trial Scheme and also a Frontier Research Technology Program, also focusing on A I. So whilst I'm in strong support of developing A I, I'm concerned about overlapping of these institutions and also the fragmentation of resources. The next question I want to ask is I, in relation to I T I B one-five-seven. My question was on the solutions and successful matching. I think that is very important in promoting the development of a smart government. According to the reply, over twenty government departments have rolled out over sixty solutions in the past few years. You've cited some examples such as a robotic dog and also an A I identifying sign board. Um you've cited some examples such as a robotic dog and a and also uh A I identifying sign boards, uh use the use of I O T etcetera to monitor marine refus. Can you explain the role of these um labs and projects? Right, I think uh actually you've spoken for three minutes. Uh there are two questions. One on the overlapping functions of the A I R and D Institute and other government initiatives. Perhaps you can select a number of points to respond to, Secretary. Well, we have a lot of A I companies in the mainland. It is still necessary to set up for us to set up an A I Development Institute. It involves not only millions of dollars but billions of dollars of investment because of the prospect. Now, Mr. Chan mentioned different initi- initiatives, but they happen at different levels. For example, we have some shorter term projects for five to ten years. We also have uh institutes set up by universities. Now, this uh research institute is for education, is for R and D. Whereas for the Hong Kong government, we have decided that um A I should be developed to to support the future industrial development. So there is no wastage of resources. Resources are put into different areas. And we also need to resolve some bottleneck issues such as a lack of data. Now, Mr. Chan, you can go to different websites to see the work of different uh institutions. About the this A I R and D Institute, we need to set it up because of the A I development around the world. We can't tackle, I mean, we can't work alone. In Hong Kong, in China, in the US, different universities are taking forward the same initiative. The purpose of the institute is to gather the research teams together. Now, these university professors may not work full time for the institutes, rather they are partners. So they work together uh in this institute to develop A I for Hong Kong. At this stage, it is necessary for the government to set up this institution in order to take the lead and to consolidate the resources. The second point is that we need to um cater for the needs of different sectors. And that also requires a high level steer by the government. In the past three years, we have rolled out different A I related initiatives and now we're seeing results. Everything relates to A I, including computing power, um algorithms, and also the funding schemes. So we have we have laid out the plan. What happens is that we need to empower the different sectors, and this is an important driver. The third point uh is that we need to provide support to enhance computing power and the use of data. This can't be done singly by any uh university or research team. We need a holistic support from the institute. The fourth merit is that we want to foster the exchange of talents around the world. We need this centralized, target-driven institution. If need be, we can also conduct experiments to promote pro- productivity. Well, just to respond, Chairman, I think the secretary's reply is exactly what I want to ask, and that is you need the this institute to take up this role of resource consolidation so that we take a more focused approach. Mr. Edmund Wong, I have a question on one three one. According to the government's reply, two hundred and thirty million dollars were spent on funding um different projects in the T S S U. And uh in twenty twenty three, twenty four, three hundred and eleven startups obtained funding to provide different products and services in the market. So is there any follow-up action? Has the government further assessed whether the startups have expanded their business or provided more services and products? I want to gauge the economic benefits. Next, I'd like to follow up on another question, two, three, five. That's a question from me about the Digital Cop I D platform. Earlier, when you answered the same question, you mentioned that you have engaged the sector. My profession supports this platform as well. So as to promote a digital government, but we're concerned about the fees and charges. At the initial stage, will there be subsidies for enterprises to get on board and enjoy the benefits of this e-platform so that you can have a smooth rollout of the Digital Cop I D platform? According to the administration's reply, you need to go by the user pays principle. My question is whether you will consider providing subsidies or concessions for the business sector to make good use of this platform. I will take the first question and then Sir Tony Wong can take the second question. Startups form a very important aspect of uh I N T and industrial developments in Hong Kong in the future. These are startups and they are the our hope. According to statistics, we have four thousand seven hundred startups in Hong Kong. That's four times the figure last year and an increase by ten percent. You also mentioned um assessing the business results of the startups and that's um a very important aspect as well. We have close to twenty unicorns in Hong Kong. Uh I'm not going to quote each and every of them, but indeed, we're at a critical point and the startups are booming. The next step is to is for them to leverage on Hong Kong as a platform to further their development. That is why we have the I N T oriented fund and we have rolled out the two point oh um version. It will be implemented in full in due course in order to address the bottleneck facing startups. In fact, next year, we plan to float this um I mean submit this funding proposal to Lashco. The next step is to help startups grow in Hong Kong. We need capital. In other words, we also need to uh help them expand business in both Hong Kong, the mainland, and also the overseas. We always talk about this um tech firm is a very prominent firm. It has the D N A of Beijing and then it set it sets up its presence in Hong Kong. It becomes part of Hong Kong. It has the Hong Kong D N A as well. And now it follows international standards and produces very great products for the world. So according to um the member suggestion, we'll continue to take forward the directions laid out in the blueprint. Second question, Mr. Tony Wong. Digital Cop I D platform. I thank Mr. Wong for the questions and I thank him for the support. We do adopt the user pays principle. Corporations will be required to pay for applying for Cop I D. We have a very rigorous fee schedule. We will make sure that once the platform is rolled out, the fees will be charged at an affordable level. We're also uh we're also awaiting for the cost estimates for the development of this co- system. But what is important is to encourage more government departments or corporations to provide E services in on this uh cop uh digital Cop I D platform. So as to attract more enterprises to join us. This will help enhance efficiency and help save costs. We'll continue to liaise with the sector, uh including Sir Wong's sector, so as to benefit more enterprises. Next, Ms. Yunis Young.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on two, four, six and two, four, four. I support the development of a A I uh center. In the two sessions report, they are mostly about uh new robotics and A I development. We don't have a A I development blueprint yet. However, I see that many uh R and D centers work on A I. I visited the uh logistics and supply chain sen- um research center. How can we uh better consolidate the works of various R and D centers? Are we going to formulate a A I development blueprint for the trades reference? Because we see that over the short, medium to long run, there are companies at the up, middle and downstreams working on developing various products such as uh chips. Yesterday, uh together with the trade, we promulgated a proposal on A I development in Hong Kong. I will submit it after the meeting. I'd like to know more about our direction of development, the secretary. Many members asked about A I. Uh thank you. I keep an open mind to Ms. Young's suggestions. We definitely need a blueprint for various industries that have reached a certain stage. That's why we formulated and published the uh I N T development blueprint. Same goes to A I. As we can you can see, we already have a clear planning for it. Without it, we don't we wouldn't have made so much progress. As to when we're going to publish the blueprint, when the industry uh is more mature, we will look into it. But the industry is still just developing, uh we will work with the trade on it. Thank you, Mr. Jiminy. Um, thank you. I'd like to follow up on I T I B one, two, three. That's about the Third Inno Hong Kong Research Platform. The administration said that they have already started building the platform. I'd like to know more about the progress. In the twenty twenty three uh policy address, it is said that early twenty twenty five, the administration is going to invite interested universities and enterprises to submit expression of interest. Over fifty uh projects will be supported under the platform. I wonder how many submissions the government have received and how long would it take for them to scrutinize all the applications? And will there be a ceiling of subsidy for each and every project? When will we complete the first stage of uh support? Thank you. I will ask Mr. Ivan Lee to take the question. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, member, for the support to the platform. We have been preparing for the establishment of the Third Inno Hong Kong uh Research Platform. We have invited all A G C funded universities to submit a proposal by the end of August. They have to incorporate uh international collaboration elements into their projects. They have to tell us uh what kind of I N T projects they have in cluster. When we receive the proposals, we will look into it uh with assistance of our steering committee. We will complete the uh scrutiny within this year. Thank you. What about the ceiling of funding for each project? Will there be one? Thank you, secretary, or rather commissioner. Uh we have to look into the proposals. The steering committee will give us some advice on it. According to our experience, some R and D uh centers have ten or some have twenty to thirty projects. Thank you. Uh Mr. Yu Pac Lan, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on Ms. Yunis Young's questions. That's uh two, four, seven. I'd like to know more about the Digital Transformation Support Pilot Program. I thank the administration for expanding the program to tourism and personal service sector. The uh pilot program was just extended to the tourism sector by the end of last year. So the trade uh isn't really aware of the pilot program. Only ten applications come from the tourism trade. However, together with the Cyberport, the tourism sectors organized a briefing session. Some dozens of uh travel agencies attended it. I hope that the administration will step up uh publicity of the pilot program. Although the administration received only ten applications, three were approved. It seems that the approval rate is rather low for the tourism trade. Can you let us know why some of the projects were not approved? I, well, apart from the Digital Transformation Support Pilot Program, I know that there are various programs and schemes under the I T I B to support various industries to make use of innovation and technology to upgrade and transform. We hope that there can be a tourism I N T fund to support the trade in upgrading and transforming so that we can develop smart tourism. But uh the administration hasn't given us any concrete response to our suggestion. I hope that the administration will step up their communication with the tourism trade so that our sector can make use of uh I T to upgrade and transform. Thank you. Digital Transformation Support Pilot Program and other support measures for the trade. Thank you. I will ask uh Mr. Wong, Commissioner for Digital Policy, to answer the question. Thank you for the members' for support to the pilot program. At the end of twenty twenty four, the pilot program was expanded to cover tourism and personal services sectors on top of retail and F and B sectors. The Cyberport is stepping up their promotion of publicity among the tourism trade. In response to Mr. Yu's resp- request, we will ask the Cyberport to promote the scheme and program to the trade. I hope that the member will continue to support our efforts. As for the approval uh progress, we have received, well, we have uh listed some eight hundred and seventy solutions onto our platform so that um interested enterprises can procure them. Cyberport have received over six thousand seven hundred applications from S M Es. More than two thousand five hundred applications were approved involving a funding amount of a hundred and twenty million dollars. The Cyberport will continue to follow up on the remaining applications. Usually, within two months, the Cyberport can uh complete the scrutiny of the application if all the documents are ready. Enterprises, if their applications were rejected, can call the Cyberport to know more about uh the reasons. Thank you. Next, Doctor Lo Wei Quack. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I my question has to do with the opening remarks of the secretary. I've said more than one times in the Legislative Council that sometimes the administration deliberately takes a detour. I see that the uh secretary has worked very hard on the development. Now, in Shanghai, we see um a cluster of I C industry. S M I C was supposed to be uh located in Hong Kong, but now it's in Shanghai. Sometimes people think that um technology that is not biotechnology is not tech. For micro electronic uh industry, the trade has been working very hard to develop it, but the administration seems not to care. I support the setting up of the micro electronic centers in Yunnan. I hope that the center will be commissioned very soon because now we are I hope that the center will be commissioned very soon because now we are just preparing for it. I see that we have some uh breakthroughs in I C. When will we see the day of technological breakthrough in Hong Kong? Secretary. Thank you. I know that before you became a technical member, you were a uh industrialist in the industry. I think that we should look ahead. I think that uh Hong Kong has turned a new chapter over the past few years. Since like this term of the government uh has taken office, we have made uh preparations for the development of I N T in Hong Kong. We have launched many uh I N T policies. As you can see, we have three parks, uh five R and D centers, uh integration of uh development of the academics, research and industry. All of them have to do with integration into the national strategy. We also have stepped up collaboration with the international community. I think that we, well, our future is bright. You talked about microelectronics research and development. This is no easy task for us. Uh, over the past few decades, we have been working on the industrialization, but now we are trying to set up new uh industrial centers. We are now preparing to set up the two pilot lines at the micro electronic centers. I think that uh the administration should work with the uh their counterparts in the mainland. If we can complement with our mainland counterparts, then we can achieve division of work. Uh, Dr. Lo is correct. The team under our micro electronic center, our C E O, is a Chinese. He is a veteran in the industry. Many of our partners come from the mainland, some of them are local enterprises. We do have micro electronic talents, but we don't have uh in that many industrial practitioners. So we will definitely partner with our mainland um enterprises. Ms. Dorian Kong.
Thank you. I fully support the secretary's efforts. I've been a mystery shopper for you to look into the effectiveness of your projects. I'd like to ask about two, two, six. That's Michael Tian's question on government applications. It is said that um there are seventy-six applications developed by various government departments. The cost amount to some uh tens of thousands of dollars to a few million dollars. The annual maintenance cost is not low. Some uh applications have to be maintained by spending some tens of thousands of dollars. For the um W I N save twenty hundred and um the application of the buildings department, it costs some four hundred million dollars to maintain. I was not able to search the application by using the Chinese name. There is only a application called WinSave. Um, the number of downloads amount to fourteen thousand dollars, but I don't see how this application is useful to the people. Have you looked into whether uh all these applications are useful? And I wonder if the uh government departments have looked into the effectiveness of the applications. Say, the WinSave application was only downloaded by fourteen thousand people. After downloading the application, people may not use it. Have you looked into the um usage rate? Will you say cancel some of the applications in order to save on annual maintenance cost at least? Um, I I also like to follow up on reply two, three, two. The D P O uh helped many departments to develop chatbot. It costs some seven million dollars to develop a chatbot. I talked to Bonnie. Bonnie helped me uh about the application forms. She asked me, however, to uh make applications to the relevant departments up um after sending me the application form. I also talked to Iris, the chatbot of uh I R D. However, the chatbot gave me the same answer regardless of the questions that I put. Thank you.
Right, government apps and chatbots. Let's see if Mr. Wong, Commissioner, would like to uh take these questions. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Kong, for helping us test these department, departmental government apps. We note your invaluable comments. These will be related to the relevant departments. So just to give a consolidated reply on the issue of mobile applications, we understand that this is a concern of the public as well as the Legislative Council. In recent years, we have asked the government departments to review on a regular basis the cost effectiveness of these apps. If they are not able to reach the target download, number of downloads, we will ask the government departments to pull them off the shelf in order to cut um departmental expenditure. The other point is that we have a one-stop service platform. I am smart. In the past few years, we have asked government departments to upload the relevant information and the applications on this consolidated platform. A mini program will be rolled out in the second half of this year to help government departments consolidate their different projects. They may have developed the different apps or websites in the past. And now, under this consolidated approach on this platform, the public will be able to access these services through the one-stop portal. This can also help reduce the number of um redundant apps and costs. Please also also take the question on chatbots. I thank Ms. Kong for her comments. In fact, the Digital Policy Unit has developed a centralized chatbot to support the work of different government departments in a more cost-effective manner. Different chatbots provide services in different scenarios on the basis of uh service delivery of different government departments. And Ms. Kong just now talked about the chatbots function, and this is exactly what we would like to do. We would like to consolidate the different services on a single platform so that um members of the public will not need to go through different departmental websites. Next, Mr. Sunny Ten. I have a follow-up question on O five, five. The government has made tremendous efforts in promoting A I, especially in relation to the upgrading and transformation of traditional manufacturing sectors such as garment and textile. With the U S tariff war, there is a lot of uncertainty for S M Es, and there is a need for S M Es to adopt A I more quickly to enhance competitiveness. And the question is on how the government will make use of A I to empower S M Es and help S M Es in the garment industry to go global. The other point is this. A I development in the mainland is uh taking place very rapidly, and many enterprises have advanced technologies. The next step is to go global. The Productivity Council recently helped an A I company in Beijing with robotic technology to go global. And that we should also do the same for the tech firms in Hong Kong so as to give play to our advantages. My question is whether the government has policies um additional resources to help these enterprises go global. Lastly, I'd like to thank the secretary for attending this ceremony for the opening of our service center. Right, a number of questions, A I, helping enterprises go global, et cetera. A I is critical to the future industrial development in Hong Kong. In fact, in every sector, we see the development in uh of A I, and this is the focus for industrial development in the future, including A I data as well as embodied A I. We have a number of funds such as the I T Fund and the Corporate Venture Fund all tuned to focus on A I and robotics. Next year, with the support of the Legislative Council, we will roll out the uh I T industry-oriented fund as well. We are also going to tackle some future challenges with A I. We have a number of infrastructures such as one in Sunday Bridge. We build Hong Kong into an international data hub, and that means we need to enhance our computing power. A digital technology hub will be built in Lao Shan. This will dovetail with the mainland's uh effort in Tianhai. It covers fifteen to twenty hectares. Now, when it comes to helping enterprises go global, one important initiative is to help mainland enterprises go global with Hong Kong as a springboard. And that is why we need to explain our advantages as an internationalized city. A I is also one important impetus. I thank uh the member for his leadership in the Productivity Council. This afternoon, we are going to ho- hold the major activity, and we have a service center. This will be a platform for mainland enterprises to go global, especially against the current global landscape. I think it is of utmost importance. Mr. Standing. Thank you, Chairman. We represent the labor sector. We represent the working class. We are very passionate about innovation technology as it will bring more jobs. As I understand from budget, a lot of resources are being put in research development and the nurturing of talents, et cetera. Now, my fellow party members have put forward a number of questions. The next question is whether these initiatives will yield results. Now, my focus is on whether I N T can indeed bring us more jobs. But let's set aside the issue of jobs for now. I'll see if the secretary could explain the following to me. The first one is the uh one billion dollar I N T industry-oriented fund as well as a one billion dollar investment in the development of a Hong Kong A I R and D Institute, six hundred million dollars on the Microelectronics R and D Institute, et cetera, not to mention some um scholarships. With this magnitude of input, I want to make sure that these financial support initiatives could meet the needs of industries in a precise manner. And what is the government's oversight in this regard? The second point relates to transformation of innovation outcomes. This is the weakest link in Hong Kong because we have strong R and D capabilities, but not strong capability in commercializing the outcome. We haven't invested enough in the process. My question is on whether we can rely on the Greater Bay Area to enhance our efforts. The se- the third point is about talent. Are you able to keep the talents here? Because under the current um global landscape, this could pose a major challenge, that may be a brain drain. All right, um about challenges, jobs, et cetera, secretary? Well, I would like to say that uh what the member mentioned are exactly what we are concerned about. That is, what benefits will be brought to Hong Kong people by high-quality development? Now, the first point is our input is currently standing at one percent lower than our neighboring places. The expenditure on I N T amounted to less than twenty billion dollars. So that's really a small amount when we consider the whole picture. Now, this term of government has put forward a number of schemes, including the uh ten billion dollar I N T Industry-Oriented Fund. We also have the Race Plus Fund totaling ten billion dollars. In fact, we've approved the first round of application, and we are also considering the second round. It takes time for these enterprises and research teams to set up presence here, and these are long-term plans. The second point is that uh in the second year, the S E L government put forward the ten billion dollar N I F uh N I A S. Now, since introduction in September, we have approved two batches of applications, and the first batch is ready to start. Now, all these are long-term initiatives. It takes time for investments to bear fruition. So when we talk about I N T, we need to consider the overall development trend. And at this point, we place emphasis on not only the upstream research, but also midstream and downstream commercialization and industrial development. And that means we'll be able to bring in jobs in two or three years' time. In the past, we didn't have this opportunity, and that is why we need to work at full steam to promote industrial development. Now, this, all these will be long-term goals for the I T I B and the S E L government. They can't be completed uh in a year or two. For example, for the N I A S, we, in the first year, approved ten applications to build ten new factories. And it takes time for us to eventually reach the target. So we also set performance indicators, say, for the northern metropolis. We need to advance technological development and uh increase contribution to our G D P and also create more jobs locally. In fact, we've been negotiating with a major factory in the mainland about setting up presence in Hong Kong. But we have not had industrial development for decades in Hong Kong. So we need to address issues such as uh labor and training, and we are working with the V T C to nurture local labor. The next question is about retention of labor. The only way out is to promote industrial development. Only when there are industries in Hong Kong will we be able to keep our talents here. So that is why we take a technology-led approach to promote the development of enterprises and industries in Hong Kong so as to gather talents here. That is why around the world, the focus nowadays is on the development of industries to drive G D P growth. Uh, sorry, I've uh went over the speaking time limit, Chairman. I really need to elaborate my answers. While the these questions were not asked by other members, so I've given time for the secretary to elaborate his answers. Next, uh, Mr. Kenny Fa.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on I T I B zero, five, eight. That's uh Mr. Tang Fei's question. In the policy address uh last year, it is said that we are going to set up a ten billion dollar industry-oriented fund to to guide market capital to I N T industries. The government said that the I T I F cover five different major segments. And there will be sub-funds established for each and every of the segment. And it is said that the overall fund size will become four hun- forty million, a billion dollars. And the administration said that they have received some sixty applications. I wonder if the administration have achieved the forty billion dollar goal? If not, will the administration inject a fund into the I T I F? The country has been promoting a low-altitude economy and irrelevant industries to develop new quality productive forces. Will the administration introduce a low-altitude economy into the I T I F to guide a market capital? Thank you. Secretary? Thank you, Mr. Lau, for the question. The Finance Committee has not approved of the I T I F. However, we are already making preparations for it. We have reported to the members in a panel meeting about the fund. We talked about an important idea. That is, on top of a virtual funds of fund, we have introduced a concept of strategic investment manager. We have made reference to the mainland experience. We hope that each strategic investor will invest at least three billion dollars. We have been talking to many potential strategic investors. Some of them have signed expression um of interest with us, and we have been working with various corporations. We will report to members the progress in due course. I T I F is very much different from other funds and schemes. We will leverage on our strengths to pool together funds and capital from all around the world. We're going to report to members more details later on. We've talked about the five areas: life and health technology, AI and data science, advanced manufacturing, and new energy technologies, future industry. You talked about low-altitude economy. It covers a wide area. I think that it will fall within the four segments under the I T I F. It is a major direction of development of our country. I think that the funds manager will definitely invest in relevant projects. By this, we can facilitate the development of the industry. Thank you. Mr. Lam Chan Ting.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on one six six. That's our support to help SMEs upgrade and transform. I know that we've had, as the I N T vouchers, transformation support scheme. But all these are to help SMEs purchase computer systems or help restaurants procure ordering system. But we're talking about AI now. How can SMEs make use of AI into, in their day-to-day business? I think that we should improve, say, our digital transformation support pilots program to help SME enhance their efficiency. That's my first question. Second. One seven eight about AI application platform developed by the government. Many members are concerned about this. We ask if, we ask the C S B if manpower can be saved and procedures can be streamlined after making use of these AI applications. But the C S B didn't really give us a concrete answer. I hope that the Secretary will give us more information. Now, we have the Hong Kong Pilot, Hong Kong Guide. In the future, we're going to have another application on meetings. We're also going to have an application on court proceedings. How will these applications reduce manpower demand? And when will we fully implement all these applications? Thank you. How AI can support SMEs? Secretary, thank you. For the second question, I will ask Mr. Wong to take it. I'll answer the first one. Our support to SMEs. All of our support programs apply to SMEs. They are our important targets, so they can apply to all of our programs and schemes. In the budget, we have a manufacturing and production line transformation support program for the SMEs in the manufacturing sector, because some of them may not be able to participate in the I T I F, because we ask them to invest say billions of dollars. For enterprises that want to spend, say, just a few hundred thousand dollars to upgrade and transform, we have a dedicated digital transformation support pilot program for them. The Cyberport is now rolling out also a digital transformation program that is targeted to SMEs. Mr. Wong, we'll take the other question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lam, for the question. In the middle of last year, we have introduced a a Hong Kong, well, a Hong Kong Guide, Hong Kong Generative AI Research and Development Center developed application. We've asked all policy bureaus and departments to use the application and give us some feedbacks so that the Research and Development Center can review it and improve it. We'll introduce more users to the application, and we are going to develop more functions. As mentioned, we have the Hong Kong Pilot, and we're going to have some other applications for document processing. By having these applications, we want to enhance the efficiency of civil servants. And this also gives an idea to the management of various departments on how they can streamline manpower. More importantly, um we, the government have rolled out many new projects and new services, so they do need to enhance their efficiency. By making use of AI, the government will be able to offer more service to the public without having to increase the manpower. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chan Kien Po. I'd like to ask about one five two. It is about the effectiveness of promoting the adoption of innovation technology by bureaus and departments through the Smart Government Innovation Hub and the Tech Connect. But the administration said that they don't have the breakdown on how much manpower can be saved. They said that they have offered a matching solution for some seventy projects, and they have subsidized some or they have provided funding support to a total of fifty-nine applied technology projects or studies proposed by twenty-two government departments or offices, which includes, say, the Efficiency Office, the Water Supplies Department, the C E D D, so on and so forth. I think that promoting the use of IT is great. With the wide adoption of AI in the government, will the administration set up a K P I to assess the effectiveness of the A I, say, how much efficiency have been enhanced, how much manpower can be reduced, the satisfactory rate of the public, so that we can achieve the best cost-effectiveness? Very often, the government thinks that their mission is accomplished just by rolling out a policy, but we have to look at the results of the policy so that we can improve the next time. After rolling out the policies, we need to see how we can further improve, Secretary. Before the Secretary take the question, I'd like to say a few words. Mr. Tan Yuhun and some other members are on the waiting list. Mr. Tan Yuhun and Mr. Shanghai Long, after they've spoken, I will conclude the meeting. Thank you. Secretary?
Thank you. Chairman, and thank you for the suggestion. You've told us what we should do as the next step. We want to develop a data and smart government. This is a very challenging task, and it's also very time-consuming. This has to do with our culture and policies in the past. I T is an important driver of our economy and governance. The government has begun to feel the urgency to, of adopting AI and technology to improve enhancements, uh efficiency. After the two and a half years, we have been wiring up, and now we are looking into how we can implement and launch smart government. We've met with the Chief Executive to talk about the issues that you've raised. The Chief Executive attaches much importance to the issues. I am unfortunately unable to give you the figures that you request. We note your comments. Hopefully, in the near future, we will be able to give you the numbers. Thank you, Secretary. I was just being frank with you. I want to give you a roadmap very soon. Thank you. The comment is a very concrete one. I hope that you will note that. Next, Mr. Tan Yuhun.
Thank you, Chairman. In the past two years, we have achieved significant results in the development of innovation technology. Without making huge investments, we are now creating a very favorable outlook in the future. We need to invest in tomorrow, in the future, but it takes time. Now, in fact, I prepared a number of questions. But I think the questions have been asked by other members, so I will focus on one question that is about digital policy office. There is this section, there is this lab under the D P O relating to a smart government, so as to provide solutions to different government departments to enhance public services. Now, in fact, outside the government, we have some innovative research teams, such as an innovative lab under the hospital authority. So when it comes to providing solutions to government departments and promoting innovation technology, it seems that these government departments are working in silos. Now, sup- assuming that there is this problem of overlapping, how will resources be further consolidated so as to develop the smart government? Right, the question is on the efforts of departments in taking forward smart initiatives and how their initiatives can be better consolidated. Well, like I said in the beginning, when I replied to another member's questions, we do need to review the situation given the latest changes. Um perhaps I'll give the floor to Mr. Wong, Commissioner, to take the question specifically about the work of this lab. About this smart development innovative lab, the positioning of this lab is one of a central coordinator. Through this lab, we'll be able to showcase physically the work, and we can also arrange for activities online for matching to take place. Meanwhile, the I N T sector can also get a better understanding of the challenges and the pain points facing government departments in their operations. We have consolidated over two hundred requests from government departments, and we've also, at the same time, prov- invited the I N T sector to provide tech solutions. The next step is to hold some activities to proceed with matching, and we successfully helped forty departments procure a hundred and forty tech solutions. If need be, we also help service providers with the proof-of-concept trials. There will also be some funding support. We also work with other I N T platforms such as the Cyberport, the Science Park, as well as Productivity Council. On a regular basis, we hold sharing sessions on different themes. We have, in fact, held over twenty such sessions, and we've invited more than eight thousand participants from government departments and practitioners in the I N T sector to share the experience. So after a successful match, the relevant departments and the research teams can then take the solutions further to make sure that they can be applied. The last member to speak in today's session is Mr. Jesse Chang. I will extend the meeting and allow Mr. Jesse Chang to speak as well, and then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Chairman. Under the leadership of the I T I Bureau, we have achieved significant results in I N T development and new industrialization in Hong Kong, be it the GDP contribution, the number of practitioners, jobs, enterprises. We've seen growth in these areas. As a practitioner in the sector, along with other members, I'd like the government to take it further. I hope that we can speed up development of all the way through the chain from our and D to commercialization. I have a question on the reply number fifty-one. That's a question from me. I'd like to share with you my observation. In the Greater Bay Area, for example, there are different award schemes. There is one in Guangdong. There is also another one in Macau. But there isn't an official award in Hong Kong in relation to science and technology. Well, I understand from this year's budget, there is a significant allocation ten billions or at least six billion dollars. Very rarely do I hear about awards being put in place to Very rarely do I hear about awards being put in place to promote technological innovation and invention. I can give you some successful examples in our country. For example, in Guangdong, they have the um Tech Invention Award. Um they the there are different awards. For example, um one on contribution to natural science, tech invention, tech progress, youth um tech professionals, etcetera. In Macau, there are also three awards. One on natural science, another on tech innovation, and another on tech development. The highest amount of award is uh one million um dollars. Now, there are different awards, so I think likewise in Hong Kong, we should set up similar awards. Well, in our country, we have the State Technological Invention Award and State Scientific and Technological Progress Award. Let's set up something similar so that um practitioners in the I and T industry uh sector in the industries will have a sense of pride. Right, the question on awards, secretary. Thank you, chairman. Thank you, member, for the suggestions. I come from the academic sector. Of course, on the issue of awarding our research personnel, I'm in strong support of the idea. But now that I am the secretary, I need to think from another perspective, and that is, where do we pull the money? I can't guarantee when we will put in place this um award scheme, but we'll give it a thought. The other point I'd like to make is that indeed the research personnel in Hong Kong have also received various awards. Every year, we provide a list of awards won by our scientists in Hong Kong. These awards include um different schemes and awards from around the world. So we publish this list as an encouragement. We'll continue to do so. Now, sense of pride, this is of course important as a major incentive. We have the Run Run Shore Prize in Hong Kong. We also have the Future Science Award. In fact, in the past few years, they have set up this award permanently in Hong Kong. We have some excellent R and D talents in Hong Kong eligible for these awards. Now, but at the same time, we are in such a fiscal position that we need to um maul over the situation. But let me just say that we do have some private donations to support the different um awards, such as the Run Run Shore, I mentioned, Run Run Shore Prize, and the Future Science Award. In fact, we also have the B O C Tech Award, supported by the Bank of China's donation. So um do help us find sources to to resolve the issue of funding. Let me just give my observation, chairman. At the moment, we don't have any award set up by the Hong Kong S E L government. They usually come from the business sector or from the private sector, and these awards are given to R and D professionals in the upstream. But at the same time, since we're promoting new industrial- industrialization, um you should also award the those in the downstream. Right, noted, because we are taking the first steps. I believe in the near future, uh we will give your ideas a thought again. Right, thank you, members, for all the questions. This wraps up the session. Thank you.